This conference will now be recorded.
Good afternoon, and welcome to today's town hall. My name is Stephanie Munsterman Scriven, and I'm with the Cedar Rapids Civil Rights Commission. I'll be moderating today's panel. Today we'll provide information about tenant rights and responsibilities, identifying housing discrimination, eviction prevention, and talking about resources available due to the impact of COVID-19. Today's format will be to have each panelist share information and a brief presentation, and then we'll take questions following all of the presentations. Questions may be asked of the panelists by using the chat function in the GoToMeetings platform during the town hall, or by emailing lcpH-meetings@lin county.org. Please know this meeting is being recorded and will be posted publicly. Today's panelists include Lisa Gavin, Managing Attorney and Disaster Relief Coordinator with Iowa Legal Aid; Kim Eiler, Director of Affordable Housing Network; Janay Peterman, Director of Homeless and Housing Services with Waypoint; Tracy Akenbach, Executive Director of Housing Fund for Lynn County; as well as Housing Department Director of East Central Iowa Council of Governments; Sarah Buck, Housing Service Manager with City of Cedar Rapids; and Stephanie Munsterman Scriven, Executive Director of the Cedar Rapids Civil Rights Commission. Our first presenter today is Lisa with Iowa Legal Aid. Lisa, take it away.
Thank you, Stephanie. As Stephanie said, my name is Lisa Gavin, and I'm the Managing Attorney of the Cedar Rapids Office of Iowa Legal Aid. For everyone that's listening, Iowa Legal Aid has 10 regional offices, and we serve all 99 counties in Iowa. So if you are not in Lynn County, the information that I'm going to give you now is applicable to you too. There's two ways that you can contact Iowa Legal Aid. The first is our regular number. We are all working remotely, but our phone systems are up and we are running as usual. And that number is 1-800-532-1275. We also have a COVID-19 legal advice hotline, and that number is 1-800-332-0419. And you can use both of those numbers to reach us for questions that you have concerning landlord-tenant situations. So what I wanted to talk about is the eviction moratorium was in place until May 27, 2020, and that moratorium has since expired. So we are starting to see tenants that are being served with landlord-tenant notices and also eviction actions, mostly for non-payment of rent. So even though the moratorium has expired, there are many defenses that a tenant may have when they receive notices from their landlord or when they're going to court for eviction. The first is that Iowa law still remains in place. So your landlord has to give you the correct notices. It has to contain the correct language. They have to serve you appropriately, and they need to wait the right amount of time between when you fell behind in rent, when they served the notice, when the hearing is held. All of that is still in place. So tenants who receive notices and want to know if it was done correctly are more than welcome to call either of the two numbers that I mentioned above, and we can look at that. The other issue that may be in place is that some landlords, what we say is jumped the gun a little bit, and they started giving notices before the eviction had, before the moratorium had ended. And so our argument on that is that any notice for non-payment of rent given during the moratorium period was not legally able to be given. And so therefore, it doesn't start the eviction process. So we have seen cases like that. But I think what is more protective of tenants is the Federal Cares Act that was passed to provide protection for many people in employment and evictions and things like that in response to COVID-19. And this is a federal law. And this, the moratorium on evictions under federal law, does not expire until July 25 of 2020. So it's a little bit difficult to know if you are protected under federal law as opposed to state law. So I am going to go through a little bit of the protections. One is if you live in an apartment complex where the landlord or owner receives some benefit, usually in terms of taxes, to have low income or housing aim debt people with lower incomes. And so this is something, there's a database that we can look at to see if you fall under that protection. Usually, you will have to provide, it's income-based, so you probably will know if you are in one of these apartment complexes. The second is if you receive a Section 8 voucher or a USDA Housing Choice voucher. You will also be protected under the Federal Cares Act. The other two things that may apply in your case that you will not know is what kind of mortgage that your landlord has on the house or the apartment building. If the landlord has any federally backed or federally protected mortgages, then any tenants in those buildings will fall under the CARES protection and have until July 25 before the moratorium expires. Those would be if your landlord has an FHA of Veterans, a VA, or if their loan is protected under Freddie Mac or Sammy Mae. One of the things that the court is requiring in Iowa is that the landlord file an affidavit and certify whether or not the property falls under the CARES Act. This is a very brand-new provision. We've only had one case where that we've done on an eviction where this affidavit was filed. So it's a little bit confusing for landlords. Sometimes they don't know the answer. And so what we do is if someone contacts us with a non-payment of rent eviction, irregardless of what the landlord files, we just check all the databases, just double-check that you're not protected under the CARES Act. And if you are, like I said, they can't evict you until July 25. And then after July 25, unlike Iowa law, which is three days, they have to give you a 30-day notice to pay your rent. And they can't charge you any late fees. So if you fall under the CARES Act, you are looking like you probably won't be able to have an eviction action filed against you most likely towards early to mid-September. However, the most important thing to remember is even with these moratoriums, you still legally owe the rent. So it's not that they won't ever be able to evict you for non-payment of rent. It's just that they got to file state and federal law. And some of my fellow panelists are going to talk to you about options that are available to be able to get caught up on your rent so that you don't receive any notices for non-payment of rent or an eviction. So I will let them talk about that. But Iowa Legal Aid does serve as a referral agency for some of these rental assistance programs. So if you call us, you will get both legal advice on defending yourself in court and also a referral to an appropriate agency to help you pay your rent.
Thank you, Lisa. All the information was very helpful. And just a reminder to folks who are popping in, if you do have a question you'd like to ask of the panelists, you are welcome to use the chat function within the GoToMeeting platform. You may also submit your question or email it to lcpH-meetings@lin county.org. My name is Stephanie Munsterman Scriven, and I will be presenting next. I am the Executive Director of the Cedar Rapids Civil Rights Commission. Unlike many of us, we are also working remotely, and investigations are still moving forward. You're welcome to give us a call at 319-286-5036. And at the ending of this presentation, we'll put up a screen listing all of the different resources and contact information. Today, I'll be sharing information about housing discrimination, providing overview of reasonable accommodations for individual disabilities. And specifically, we'll touch on service animals and emotional support or companion animals. Now, in Cedar Rapids, there are several protected classes, and it is illegal to treat someone unfairly based upon any of these protected classes. The classes include age, and in Cedar Rapids, it's 18 and older; color, creed, familial status, gender identity, marital status, mental disability, physical disability, national origin, race, religion, sex, sexual orientation, association, and retaliation. Now, I want to be sure we are on the same page in regards to the definition of fair housing. All persons have the right to apply for and be considered for housing for which they are qualified and in the location of their choosing. So this applies to all housing transactions from sales, rentals, leases, advertisements, loans, appraisals, insurance, zoning, and subleases. In Cedar Rapids, based upon someone's protected class or association with a person in a protected class, these are a few ways in which you're protected. Folks are not allowed to change the terms or conditions of a sale or rental, make, print, or publish any indication or preference or limitation for a buyer or rentals. And be aware, this does include a verbal preference. For example, a landlord can't say, "We don't accept kids," to you. That is obviously indicating a limitation. Someone is not allowed to tell somebody that a dwelling is not available when it truly is, nor can you have steering individuals toward or away from specific properties or neighborhoods. Reasonable accommodations cannot be refused for a person with disability. Now, a few examples of what discrimination might look like are refusing to sell or rent to a family with children, requiring a background check or credit check on applicants of one specific race and not everybody, requiring detailed medical documentation to prove a disability. Now, speaking of disability, we're going to move into reasonable accommodations. Now, a reasonable accommodation is a change at the expense of the landlord in rules, policies, practices, and services necessary for a person with a disability to use and enjoy the unit. Now, a few examples of what this might look like are a landlord would provide an accessible parking space for an individual with a disability, allowing changes in rules for paying rent. Perhaps you can permit more clutter or allow more time to comply with the notice to clean. A landlord could permit a tenant with a mobility impairment to move from a third floor to a first floor unit if it becomes available. And another option and possibility is to allow a service or support animal even with a no pets policy. So this is an area we get quite a few questions from tenants as well as landlords. So let's clarify what we mean by pets and assistance animals. As you're probably well aware, pets are animals that live with an owner for the purposes of love, affection, or company. There are two different kinds of assistance animals. Service animals, they are the ones that perform a task that is for the benefit of an individual with a disability. There's also support animals, also called companion animals or emotional support animals. And they provide a therapeutic benefit for a person with a disability. So let's talk about documentation for assistance animals. A housing provider can require a note from a qualified professional, such as a psychiatrist, a doctor, a therapist, a social worker, et cetera. But the documentation only needs to state that the person has a disability and he or she or they requires the support or service animal. Now, if it's a service animal, they will list out what task the animal is specifically trained to perform. I want to reiterate a couple very clear things. These are questions that we get quite often. Service and support animals are not pets. So therefore, they're not subject to pet policies or requesting, requiring pet deposit, nor can they be charged pet rent or pet fees. There cannot be a prohibition on the animals based on type, size, number, breed, or weight, nor can you require them to have identifying documents or a vest. It is in your best interest as a landlord and tenant to have a conversation when you're requesting a reasonable accommodation and come to terms on what is best needed for you to use and enjoy your unit. Our next panelist is Kim with Affordable Housing Network. Take it away.
Hi, everyone. Affordable Housing Network is a property management company, and we own and manage over 800 units in the Cedar Rapids area. Our properties are a mix of market units as well as HUD-subsidized units. We also do two tenant-based rent assistance programs that provide rent assistance to over 150 houses in the Cedar Rapids area. We also do an owner-occupied homeownership program in Wellington Heights neighborhood. When COVID first started, I think we immediately just kind of thought about all of the ways that it would impact our residents. You know, with many of our residents on fixed incomes, our subsidies already in place. You know, we just wanted to ensure that we, you know, kind of took a look at everything that could impact them and their ability to pay rent and their ability to just kind of continue with their day-to-day lives. And I think for that reason, you know, we immediately set a plan in place on, you know, we were going to waive late fees. We were going to work with people on, you know, late rent payment agreements. And, you know, just really tried to work with them individually to ensure that we were just keeping that communication going. And I think with that, it really was good for the residents because it allowed them time to kind of prioritize their needs and be proactive. And a lot of the residents, you know, have just commented that it was just very important to have that time to do that, and it really took a lot of the stress out of a stressful situation. You know, here we are, three months into it, and I am really happy to say that a large majority of our residents have met their payment agreements, are paying as agreed, and a lot of them have even taken advantage of, you know, the extra COVID pay to even get ahead because they know that there still is some unknowns in the future, and they're just being really proactive about it. We do have a handful that are still financially impacted, and we're just working with them on a one-on-one basis with the City of Cedar Rapids Eviction Protection Assistance, Iowa Finance, if that might be the other route to go, and just doing whatever we can to do. So I think some of the, I'll call them the COVID gaps that have occurred, we have not really seen a decrease in the number of people that are out looking for housing. We still have lots of people that are, you know, in need. We still are seeing a lot of people trying to move out of shelter. And what has happened is, you know, we rely on a lot of social service agencies to assist the residents, our potential residents, and that has really looked different. You know, they provided transportation. They provided help in filling out paperwork. And so, you know, trying to still house people in this COVID world has looked a lot of, has looked very different these past three months. And, you know, the first, you know, two, three months of this, I think, was really hard on a lot of our residents, but especially those that do suffer from, you know, chronic mental health issues. And one of the things we were really seeing was, you know, residents that normally might have been placed for a longer stay to address mental health needs were either not even being taken to the hospital or immediately released. So we are seeing some of those mental health beds open back up now, which is good. But that was kind of, you know, stressful for everyone involved, you know, for the first eight to 12 weeks of that. But it also just shows how important that all of the services are, that we all work with or collaborate with our mutual clients. And I'm so appreciative of all of the organizations that we partner with the last couple of months because they really did help us to continue to provide that high level of customer service and care to our mutual residents or in clients.
Thank you so much, Kim. It is such a good point you make about how the partnerships are key to our recovery. So thank you for sharing that great information. And a reminder to folks, if you have questions, you're welcome to use the chat function within GoToMeeting platform, or you're welcome to email lcpH-meetings@lin county.org. Our next panelist is Janay with Waypoint.
Yeah, hi. So I'm Janay Peterman. I'm the Director of Housing at Waypoint Services. And kind of just to piggyback off of what Kim was talking about, you know, these are tough times for everybody right now, and people are behind on rent. They have lost wages, or they've lost their income completely. And we're really working with landlords to keep those lines of communication open. And the majority of what we're hearing is landlords are accepting this. They understand that people are just going through tough times right now and are really willing to work with clients on creating a plan. So communication is extremely important when it comes to keeping your tenancy positive and having a positive experience for both tenants and landlords. One of the things we really stress is that you are always open and honest with your landlord, and you're addressing things immediately. So if something needs to be fixed or you already know that you're going to be behind on rent, making sure you're letting your landlord know right away that you're clear, you're open, and you're respectful with your landlord. And we try and work with clients to come up with a plan. Landlords are always more willing, or not, I shouldn't say always, are most likely more willing to be accepting of, accepting late rent or getting in immediately to fix, maybe not in non-emergent situations, if the tenant has a plan. So if they come up with something of, you know, "I'm going to pay X amount of my back rent each month," whatever that might look like, or waiving a late fee one month, landlords have been pretty willing to do that. So as long as you're communicating immediately or respectfully and you're clear, you're more likely to build that relationship with your landlord. We also always encourage to try and do it in person if you can. Obviously, during these times, meeting in person isn't always the best option right now. But then calling that landlord and talking with them over the phone. What we have seen happen is text messages or letters that have been written can sometimes be misconstrued or misunderstood, and the messaging hasn't gotten across, or the landlord never received the text message or the letter. So if you need help with that piece, you know, you can always contact one of the local housing providers. So Waypoint and Willis State, they both are really dedicated to landlord communication. They really help our goals of ending homelessness and providing housing for all of our citizens and the community. So we are dedicated to increasing landlord communications, and we will help you write a letter to your landlord if they're not being responsive. And we'll help you talk about some verbiage and call your landlord if you need that three-way call to happen. If things just are not going well with your landlord, we will also help you reach out to Iowa Legal Aid and find out what your next steps might be to move forward. And that goes the same with landlords as well. If you have a tenant that you're really struggling with, you can always reach out to Waypoint. We have a specific position within our agency that is there to build landlord relationships, landlord-tenant relationships. So they will step in and see what mediation they can provide and what assistance we can help because we really want to keep people in housing. We want to keep them safe and stable. So it is extremely important that tenancy remains, that it remains in place. So we will do what we can to help that communication go well and get people back on track if they've fallen a little behind or address any issues that might be coming up during their tenancy. And that's all I have.
Great. Thank you so much, Janay. It's such good information and a great reminder for folks to be proactive when there are potential concerns and also that there's so many great resources in our community. Our next panelist is Tracy. She represents the Housing Fund for Lynn County and East Central Iowa Council of Governments.
Thanks, Stephanie. I'm unique in this group, I think, in that I don't work directly with individuals who may be assisted with funding that we provide. So as Stephanie said, I represent two different entities, really. The Housing Fund for Lynn County is a local nonprofit. It's a local housing trust fund. We are in the position to, we can apply for state funding once a year, if we're lucky, and then we use those funds along with local funds to be able to award grants or loans to the organizations. A lot of them are represented today, to be able to provide housing assistance. So if you are representing an organization and you've never heard of us before, you need to be working in the area of housing. That's the one criteria. And then our money can only benefit persons of low to moderate income. But the Housing Trust Fund Board tries to make applications available twice a year so that organizations can apply to us for funding. We have awarded, since we started in 2008, I think we've awarded a little over $4.2 million. So we do have funding that we can make available. We do try and do some loans so that we can continue to sustain ourselves. And then I also work for ECICOG, which is a regional planning organization. And I just want to bring that up because we provide planning services for the region, which is Lynn, Johnson, Iowa, Benton Jones, and Washington Counties. And we offer a lot of services. So one of those is housing. So that's the area then that I also work with, the Housing Fund for Lynn County. But we also provide transportation services, environmental services. We do other things for smaller communities in the counties. So I would just encourage you, I can be reached at, my phone number is 319-365-9941, and my extension's 139. And I am back working in the office now, so you can reach me at that phone number. But I also encourage you to go to ECICOG's website. There you will find a link to the Housing Fund for Lynn County, but it's also ECICOG's website, and that's e-c-i-c-o-g.org. And I'll leave the rest to the rest of the folks who work with people directly. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much, Tracy. It's so important to know what resources are available. So thank you so much for sharing that. Our next presenter is Sarah Buck. She's with the City of Cedar Rapids as our Housing Services Manager.
Hello. Good afternoon. So I wanted to talk a little bit today about the city's eviction prevention program. So back when we received notification from HUD that we would be receiving approximately $624,000 to help assist with impacts due to COVID-19, we immediately reached out to our landlords, and we've been hearing, obviously, from tenants that had concerns about paying rent. So about 8%, landlords were stating that about 8% of their units were behind on rent, which, based on the number of units that they were reporting on, ended up being about 880 units that would have been behind on rent as of April of 2020. So we took that information and assumed that that would only increase as the closures... So we took that information and assumed that that would only increase as the closures continued throughout May. So we put together an eviction prevention program, went to council. Obviously, city council is very much in support of doing this to make sure that our most vulnerable citizens are not impacted and are able to receive some rent assistance to get them through until things start to reopen and people are able to get unemployment or get employment again or potentially receive unemployment benefits. So what this program is, is the city can pay up to $2,000 per household for up to three, three months' worth of rent assistance. And then also can provide utility payments for up to three months in arrears for any charges that were incurred from March 27th moving forward. So and how people can apply for that, they can work through Iowa Legal Aid. We always make sure that anyone who has received a notice, whether that's a three-day notice of non-payment or an eviction notice that we are referring them to Iowa Legal Aid to make sure that they're getting the best representation that they can for preventing that eviction while we work on the backend with the tenant to, and Iowa Legal Aid is taking those applications. And then we work with, on the backend with the tenant to get them approved for this funding. And then that payment goes directly out to those landlords and to the utility providers. So what that, there's also some income limitations as well. So a household of four could earn up to $71,450. If they weren't under that dollar amount, they could still be eligible for this program. And so for a household size of one, that would be $50,000 and $50,050 for a household size of one for the income limit. And then I'm sure everyone has also heard about the state's program. We do differ slightly from the state's program in that the state will do mortgage assistance. We are currently not able to provide mortgage assistance payments. Again, just looking at timeframes and people, the amount of, the numbers of people that are needing the rental assistance, we chose to assist those folks first with the understanding that additional funds will be coming through our community. And at that point, we'd be looking at those urgent needs and adding on mortgage assistance payments if that is still an urgent need at that point. Also, the state will not accept applications from anyone who's currently receiving the cares funding, which is the additional $600 a week that people are receiving along with their unemployment. That is not something that we would deny for. So if you are receiving that, that funding, we understand that that funding is limited, that that money will be ending soon. And we will still assist you regardless of you receiving that additional fund as long as you income qualify and qualify in every other way. Just want to make sure I've hit all my talking points here. We also are going to assist folks that are, that have a home, that have a mortgage with utility payments. So that was something that we weren't necessarily putting out there originally. But since the amount of money, we have, the number of applications that have been coming in have been a lot slower than what we had anticipated. So we're opening up the utility payments for mortgage owner, homeowners as well. So again, feel free to contact Iowa Legal Aid. And then we also have another few agencies in the community that can provide that referral, such as Waypoint or Willis Statey. If you're working with them, they have the ability to get those referrals over to us. We are not taking applications directly on the website. Again, just due to the amount of funding that we currently have, we want to make sure that we're serving those at the highest need first and also making sure that they have those resources available in any other way that they need, whether it's food or shelter or something else, that they're getting those resources that they need from these community service agencies. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Sarah. It's so good to know the resources that are available and that we're all mutually invested in maintaining housing for folks in our community. So I want to make another call for folks. If you would like to submit a question for the panelist, you're welcome to submit that via the chat function in the platform. You're also able to email lcpH-meetings@lin county.org. And if you can, indicate who the question is for. If we don't get to questions, we'll be sure to follow up. For general information on COVID-19, please do call 211 or go to Lynn County Public Health, Iowa Department of Public Health, or Centers for Disease Control websites. I'll take a moment to wait, see if any questions roll in. While we're waiting on that, I want to share the contact information for resources in our community. Feel free to reach out to any of us with any questions that you might have. Otherwise, thank you to the panelists for sharing your expertise. And thank you to Lynn County Public Health for hosting the town hall. The next virtual town hall will be Friday, June 19th, and they'll be discussing the Healthy Estate Initiative with Make It Okay. And thank you to everybody who is participating, and please stay well and take care. Thank you.